Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regularly scheduled meeting. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Please call the board.
Carla?
Here.
Eliza?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Turner?
Here.
Berzak?
Here.
Olmsted?
Here.
Teeschel? We have a forum. Okay, and tonight will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance from students from Jefferson Elementary. Alright, thanks, everybody. Of course, you're welcome to stay, but don't feel obligated. Okay, we'll go right into Board Administrative Reports. I have nothing to report tonight, so we'll start right with Superintendent.
Yes. Good evening, and Superintendent's Good News Report for November 15th, 2017. This past Saturday afternoon, November 11th, was a fantastic day, and on Saturday, November 11th, several of state local, state representatives, federal representatives, joined in honoring veterans by cutting the ribbon at the new Oshkosh West Wall of Honor. A huge thank you to Andrew Schaller and for the countless hours and time and energy spent on this tremendous tribute. To date, eighteen hundred, fifteen hundred and eighty-seven names have been added to the wall. The project started in Andrew's basement when he was a Iraq veteran and decided to create a wall of honor for his twenty-eight family members and who were also veterans. Knowing the impact and recognition and appreciation of veterans, Andrew's idea became larger and encompassing the Oshkosh community when he decided to pursue a wall of honor in Oshkosh West High School. While this project involved lots of time and resources and smiles from veterans seeing the wall in their honor and searching for the names of the priceless scene, thank you to Andrew for the great tribute for those who fought for our freedom. And I should add the fact that we have made arrangements and simply contacting Oshkosh West High School, they are arranging open evenings. In fact, just an hour ago, there was a major lineup at Oshkosh West High School of citizens in the community coming in to see the wall of honor. And I expect that we'll be continuing to have opportunities for individuals to come and see the wall of honor. Last Friday, after several of the veterans programs, I had the opportunity because there are a number of veterans attending our other veteran events who were interested but couldn't make it Saturday, I did a small private tour of about seven, eight, nine individuals to show them the wall of honor late on Friday afternoon, and they were most pleased to do so. And just this afternoon, I received a photo of almost a live, large group gathering in the hallway to also see the veterans on Honor Wall. And so, please do contact West High School, and they will put you in touch with what the time and arrangement after school to come and visit the Honor Wall and to find family or friends that might be listed on that wall. They have a complete directory that's alphabetical that gives you row and line for identifying each location. And so, what a tremendous project, and what a special way to honor veterans this past Veterans Day. Carl Trager Middle School students have the opportunity to participate in workshops regarding writing with the eight-time award winner, author of Blue Fish, Pat Schmaltz. And Pat provided information about her winning journey for students, which helped them learn where ideas come from and how she develops characters, plots, the setting, emotion, and action. Pat was engaging and had fun with the students. Thank you to Laura, Manager of the St. Vincent De Paul Store, for purchasing ten scientific calculators for Oshkosh North English Language Learners and New Students. Pictured here is the National Merit Scholarship Advisory Board, which recently met in Evanston, Illinois. Erin Cole, Principal of Oshkosh West High School, is in her second year as a four-year term as a member of that board and comprised private counselors and administrators across the U.S. Congratulations also to Oshkosh West Equestrian Club members Macy and Lauren, who qualified for the Wisconsin Interscholastic Horsemanship Association State Meet in Madison at the end of October. So, we have quite a contrast there between Equestrian and National Honor Society on the same page. First grade students at Shapiro STEM Academy were able to share their favorite Small Moment book with many guests at a recent Authors' Celebration. Students from the entire school learned about the cooperation during the school-family assembly on November 7th, and they were able to get their wiggles out by dancing while learning of importance of working together towards a common goal. Tipler and ALP students enjoyed music, potato sack races, pumpkin hoop contests, and many other events and competitions during their Fall Festival on October 31st, which was a celebration of their first quarter of school. Students had fun and could celebrate and use their railroad tickets that they had to earn purchase and purchase snacks. Jefferson Elementary students and staff enjoyed a costume parade around the block. Many of them dressed like jellyfish, but they wore entertaining costumes in the parade. Students and staff at Jefferson also honored veterans by singing patriotic songs, reciting poems to Veterans' Day ceremony. Oshkosh West Choir started the ceremony by singing the National Anthem, and taps was performed by UWO Student Senior. Compliments of Franklin Elementary PT CO and the Oshkosh Sower Foundation, fourth and fifth grade graders at Franklin Elementary, enjoyed a performance of Ruslech, A Mermaid's Tale, performed by the Opera for the Young, thanks to all who made the opportunity available to the students. Some Franklin fifth grade students also learning how to play ukulele as a result of a donation from the Donors' Choice website. Kindergarteners at Franklin Elementary recently learned about the weather from meteorologist Steve Bellon, including how a storm is made and how tools are used to measure wind speed. A photo of the class was later shown on the aired newscast. Franklin students participated in a Fall Festival at their school-wide PBIS recognition activity, which was supported in the concept of cooperation. A good deal of fun was had by all. Would you take a moment to, in the future, click and learn more about the Oshkosh Citywide Eighth Grade Career Clusters? This was produced by a local high school student, and when this is available on website, you'll be able to learn more about career clusters for eighth graders. The art students at Oshkosh North High School have been very busy, students during, and have spent time at the Payne Art Center photographing and gardening and architecture. Many of the students on a trip to Minneapolis to visit the Walker Art Center in Minneapolis, Institute of Art, were able to see that art that changed people's views. Several students recently painted Whoville-themed scenes on downtown businesses, and many students traveled, carved pumpkins that were illustrated, and haunted trail during the creepy crawlers event in October. Kindergarten students at Reed Elementary surpassed their goals of two-hundred-and-fifty and sold four-hundred bracelets to raise money to benefit a school in Houston, which is impacted by Hurricane Harvey. What a great way to reach out to others at a difficult time and help them with the money donation. A special thank you to them. And close to one-hundred-and-fifty people showed up at Webster Stanley Elementary School's annual STEM Night activities, which included butter churning, snap circuits, silly putty, and the discovery of what is in blood. Let me share a moment that at Webster Stanley Elementary, a day ago, I observed a little girl putting silly putty into her hair, and her teachers and teacher aides spent over an hour retrieving that from her hair. I'm not sure that she wanted a hat or not, but it didn't work.
No, she knows.
No, she knows.
That's not exactly what we intend with hands-on learning.
No, it is not. But everyone just, everyone just, but thank goodness it did come out. I checked later, visited four or five other classrooms, came back, and miraculous, it was recovered. Not the hair was recovered. South Park Middle School students also hosted a STEM Night, where families enjoyed concessions, prize drawings, and activities involving squishy circuits, snap circuits, robots, rockets, and many more. Communities too. Students have been working with each other to analyze mentor texts and launch creative writing approaches. Students create seeds based off the mentor text, and each week, they planted five seeds. They picked one of the five seeds that they liked to cultivate and working it further by adding personal anecdotes and beliefs. And then showed their peers by editing, for editing and revision, before making a final piece that would be shared with the group and bound a book for future study to enjoy. All I can tell you is that sounds like a whole lot more fun than diagramming sentences, I can tell you that. And Oakwood Elementary School students and staff celebrated Veterans' Day by singing, listening to a brief history about Veterans' Day and answering questions, "Who is a veteran?" Oaklawn students sponsored a dance, where students had a fantastic time, as seen by the photos above. And students and staff at Carl Trager Middle School participated in many fun and educational activities during their STEM Night on November 2nd. Students and families also took part in school programs, recently participated in National Lights On After School Event that celebrated school community, school programs, and the important role they have in the lives of children, families, and communities. And the Eagle Scout Project at Webster Stanley and Emmeline Cook, thanks to Ethan Cutts, both Webster Stanley and Emmeline Cook schools have received a little free library, which will take a book, return a book program, free exchanges. Ethan created the little free libraries as his project to earn his Eagle Scout rank. Brock Demo, eleventh grade student at Oshkosh North High School, had a great opportunity to meet President Barack Obama. Former President Barack Obama, Brock was chosen because of involvement in extracurricular activities inside and out of school, as well as his volunteer work in organizing for Action, which is part of the former president's nonprofit organization. His mother, who is secretary at Webster Stanley, very proudly, has this photo also as the backdrop on her desktop computer. And congratulations to Oshkosh Area School District for receiving the Well Coa Well Workplace Award and demonstrating unparalleled commitment to improving and maintaining the health and well-being of its employees. And thank you to OSD Partners in Health Building Captains and Steering Team, who have led the effort to implement wellness initiatives and to keep employees on a healthy plan. Hopefully, that has a bit of impact on our smaller-than-expected increase in health insurance this past year.
Looks like carrying it around would be good.
Right, yes. Absolutely. And lastly, you'll find the list of Superintendent's activities for the last two-week period. With that completes Superintendent's Good News Report for November 15th.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other reports from committee chairs?
Hi, Evan.
Okay.
Go ahead. Facility Finance met on November 9th. Our first discussion was about Pollock Community Water Park Agreement between the Oshkosh Area School District and the city of Oshkosh. Al Lenick was brought, had came in and brought forward the agreement that we have had with the city since 2006, which has three main items in that agreement. The first was the Recreation Department provides lifeguard services for the water park. Two, the community is allowed to use West High School parking lot during the open hours of Pollock. And then the third is the district contributes to the annual deficit that the facility incurs. In 2009, a flat $40,000 fee was established that could be budgeted. There are no charges in language other than the date changes, there's no changes in language other than the date changes for the next three-year period, which goes through 2020. The average deficit for the last three-year period was $27,000. There was a surplus in 2015, probably due, they thought, because of the weather, how warm it was that summer. The committee recommended approval, and the agreement will go forward to the board at the November 15th meeting, so tonight we'll vote on that one. We discussed Merrill Parking Lot update. Sue Schnorr reported that the district offered $75,000 for the property on Kentucky Street. There was asbestos found in the basement of that home, and the sellers have agreed to pay half of that cleanup, up to $500. The EMC will be on-site. The contract gives the board until November 20th to do a final inspection. The intent is to acquire the property and have a demo contractor onboard to take the house down in December or January, with completion of the project anticipated in the summer of 2019. The city does not have a stormwater infrastructure in that area, therefore, there will need to be a storm sewer installed from Custer to New York in order to pick up district stormwater. In the meantime, the lot will be mowed and maintained. The committee, we supported this, and the resolution will also come tonight for the board. I know that Mr. Fox went in and spoke, and they spoke with some neighbors around the neighborhood, and this home was in condition that a lot of the neighbors wanted it to be, we have full support of all the neighborhood to take this house and purchase it and use it and help with parking for that community, because it's, they're doing construction on the other side of the school, they're changing those slots into straits, so we're going to lose a ton of parking there, too. Then we had Mr. Mack come in, Superintendent Mack come in and talk to us about the Jackson Street Athletic Field. Mr. Mack was approached by three representatives of the Jackson Street Neighborhood Association, interested in occupying the far northwest corner of the athletic field located at Jackson Street, where the tennis courts used to be. It is at the intersection of Nevada and Jackson. Their desire is to commemorate the history of Jackson Field with plantings and plaques. The intent is to create a neighborhood gathering space for Jackson Street residents. Currently, that space is mowed and not used for anything. The group is seeking authority to plan and come to the board with a proposal. There was also some concern with losing green space and with having this group develop something that might need to be relocated in the future if something else would develop on that property. There was also concern with maintenance. Mr. Fox requested to work with this group to come up with a plan. The committee would like to see the final plans before they start proceeding. And they had a whole list of all of the, it was fascinating, a whole list of the history of that field and who played on it, and when they played, and the names, and the games, and everything. It was really, really, really interesting. So, it was people that have been in the community that actually used that field decades ago, too. So, it was really neat. Diversified benefits, services, and changes to HRA. Sue Schnorr informed the committee of the change to the third-party administrator who manages the district's HRA and flex plans. This is a positive change. As far as the change, the HRA will only be allowed on in-network services. The best policy solution was to limit the HRA use to in-network only. The committee supported the change. And then also, INTERA Contract Renewal. Sue Schnorr shared the latest INTERA Contract Renewal with the committee. This is the end of a three-year contract with the city, county, and district. We've agreed to renew it. The district has been happy with INTERA. They have done a good job running the clinics. INTERA will be implementing an electronic record system, which has increased the cost a bit. It is not epic, which is what a lot of the clinics use, however, it is still an electronic system that can request records from other clinics when they go in. Currently, the district's health plan carrier picks up the entire cost of the clinic. The clinic has been a great return on investment already for the district. And the next scheduled meeting is December 14th at 8:30 in the morning.
Thank you. Barb, did you have?
Yes, thank you. The Policy and Governance Committee met right after the Facilities and Finance Committee met on November 9th at 10:00 a.m. We did, we had a public forum, but no one came. On the agenda tonight are the forty policies that we managed to get through, thanks to the work of the staff, Steph, and Kelly, who were able to attend that meeting. I'm not going to read the four pages of minutes, but if anyone wants them, we would be more than happy to share those. But just to summarize, there were some word changes. For example, as a group, we had, as a board, we decided we wanted the reference to Board of Education to simply be referred to as Board throughout the policies, and so that was changed in a few places. There were some other wording changes, just to bring them up into a situation where they were grammatically correct. And then there were some policies recommended for change by Niola, where there was a change in state statute or federal law, and so we needed to bring those policies up to compliance. The next meeting is scheduled for December 14th. At that time, we have, it looks like about at least ten to twelve policies we will be looking at, which is much less than the forty we did this last time. We did have a couple of policies where we had some questions, and so staff was going to do some follow-up on those, and I think those are coming back among those on December 14th at 10:00 a.m. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, great. All right, moving into non-agenda-related public forum, is there anybody that would like to address the board for non-agenda-related forum? When addressing the board, can you please clearly state your name and address and the topic you wish to address? If you're acting as a spokesperson for a particular group of individuals, please indicate the group that you represent. Please state clearly and concisely the matters of concern. Please limit your comments to the time allotted, which is five minutes. Remember that the use of specific names of district personnel may lead to legal liability. In such instances, please pursue the district's formal complaint process by contacting the Superintendent's Office at 424-0160 to direct you to the appropriate administrator. Go ahead.
Good evening. Matt Mickelson, 906 Winnebago. My son Tyler is at Webster Stanley. I was here approximately a month ago, I'm guessing, concerning Tyler's failing grade in math. He's still struggling with failing grades in math. The good news is that it's not a lack of effort at this point, it's a lack of comprehension, so we're making progress there. My reason for coming before the board tonight is to hopefully talk some more about the notification process of when a child is failing, whether it's a test or whether it's a semester grade. Where we left off last time was that I did receive an email stating that Tyler was failing a class. I was impressed by that, I was thankful for that. In the middle of October, Tyler took a test in math, specifically, he scored nine out of 25, or 36 percent. I didn't hear about it. In the past, I've been told to check Infant Campus. I had been on Infant Campus, had seen his D in the first reporting block, was unaware of this failing grade because the teacher uses Canvas, so it's a little confusing on like, okay, where am I supposed to be looking? So, I'm going through a learning process on that. I would have really appreciated just some kind of contact or info, an email, something. I am learning through Canvas that it's there, I understand that, but even just a teacher reaching out and sending me an email would have been much appreciated. Because I was unaware of it, I couldn't address the issue with Tyler and give him some more direction to correct the situation. He was able to take, retake the test and up the grade somewhat, and that was, the teacher has a policy of 90 percent of homework at least being put in, so he's doing the work, and that's why he was allowed to retake it. So, because of the failing grade, that pulled his grade down far enough that when we found out about the grade last week, Monday, I'm sorry, Tuesday for sure, he was suspended off the basketball team, so he was emotionally distraught about that. This was something that, had I known about it, I would have hopefully addressed, and possibly, he wouldn't have been suspended. So, although basketball, just to be clear, is secondary to him learning here. I've learned that there's supposed to be a good practice of teachers communicating. This is the second time that I feel like there has not been good practice in communication and issues to be addressed. I did have good communication this last Tuesday with his teacher. He was able to retake that test. I felt that we had a productive conversation. I'm here tonight to ask for a policy to be put into place, that if a child is failing in some form or fashion, whether it's tests or whether it's, you know, semester grade across the board, I would ask that more notification be put out to parents. Me, as a parent, I'm wanting more contact with his teachers. I'm also starting to run up against my time limit. Is it okay if I continue? I have a couple more dynamics, or...
Can you wrap it up in about three minutes?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I've had extensive conversations with Mr. Mack, with Principal Marshall, with the teacher. We're frustrating each other, but I also feel that we're being productive in our conversations. I don't know exactly how they're feeling in the situation, but yeah, hopefully, that's, we are taking steps forward. To Mr. Marshall's credit, I did include him in the conversation with the teacher, just because of the ongoing issue. Something I'm also, something else I'm also looking into is, does Infant Campus or Canvas have the ability to email me grades? That would be a really good, easy fix for everybody concerned. A friend of mine is on the board in Oakfield and said that the program that they use for grading has that ability. Anytime a grade changes, she gets an email or a notification about that. I have a, I met with the math teacher yesterday, I believe, and he sent an email to the technology guy that runs Infant Campus or Canvas. I have not heard back from him yet. I want to give him a little bit of time to breathe, to respond to me, but we'll also follow up with that. I think that would go really far in my desire to have more communication. Something else I learned real quick, and just the side notes, and then I'll wrap this up. The homework grading policy, homework doesn't get graded. I think that that would have gone a little bit farther to identify this as, in Tyler's situation, as a, you know, if parents can see grades more often, it's not as final as a test, which is going to pull down his grade. It's an earlier indicator, which I think would be more advantageous. I understand it's more work for the teachers, but I would ask, so, A, the notification policy to be looked at and hopefully instilled, and also rethinking the homework grading policies, so we can get further into, are they understanding? Thank you.
Thank you.
I also am available if anybody has any questions. Principal Marshall has all of my contact info.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else from the public who would like to address the board on non-agenda public-related, wait a minute, non-agenda-related public forum? How about the agenda-related public forum? Okay. Then we're going to go ahead and go right into our first workshop, which is the results of the Superintendent's search survey. This is something that came up last week when we were trying to determine the, what is it? It's not the qualities, like the characteristics of the superintendent. And a couple of surprising pieces of data came back, and... And a couple of surprising pieces of data came back, and this is our chance to kind of put them out on the table and see what we'd like to do, if anything. Does anybody want to start? Because I'm happy to put the big elephant in the room. You can start there. All right, I like elephants. So, all right, so the big one that came up was that staff, support staff administration had said, had ranked innovation as a whole low, and we ranked it really high. And there was a really big gap. And so when we talked to Mary about that, we asked, so, you know, what's the reasoning behind the gap? And I think from what I took from that conversation, it was, it was like the assumptions, that somehow our assumption of what we mean when we say innovation, it might be different. And so I think all of us want to close that gap, or at least narrow it a little bit, yes? So can that be like the foundation that we start with? Okay. It's also, so who wants to? Steve, you look like you want to say something.
I always want to say something.
I know you do.
But thank you, Ms. Garner, I think you've teed it up nicely. And yeah, I had the same reaction, I'm sure we all did, maybe in large or small measure. And I agree with your directive that if we, if there's, if we can close that gap, that would be helpful, right? So we're all pulling in the same direction, so we have a common understanding of where we're headed. If for some reason that's not the case, well then, that's an important conversation too, right? So I'll just draw a couple of examples, maybe to further tee it up, again, not with any resolution or concrete answers, but I think of, don't be alarmed, the conversation even about like a house in a parking lot tonight, you know, it's on the agenda, or an issue that's been close to me in recent weeks especially, is our sense as a community, more so as a district, especially for students, patriotism. Patriotism as expressed by the pledge, patriotism as expressed by Veterans Day celebrations. In the context of, say, the recent Ken Burns series on Vietnam, in light of the recent NFL, high-profile expressions of patriotism in various ways, it struck me that there's a really instructive moment in our history right there. And the challenge is that I think both sides of the conversation, there are two sides of the conversation, are utterly valid. And that is that if we have a conversation about the place, the place the Pledge of Allegiance holds in our society, or the place that Veterans Day memory is, needs to hold, that can be a toxically divisive conversation. So if we don't have a conversation, it's good for harmony and peace, it's probably not so good for instruction and thoughtfulness on the parts of our students. If we do have a conversation, better for our students, but we risk kind of blowing up the place, right? So in a way, do we want, well, if I can, if I can jump a little bit from parking lots, kind of, whatever, we've had that conversation, and there's a utility to it, and there's also probably in New York and in Boston and in Frankfurt, there are really meaningful conversations about parking lots, probably, because they're more pressed for space and pressed for solutions that we're not up against. And there's patriotism. And then I had a conversation with a friend of mine, a professional colleague who owns an ad agency in Milwaukee, and he just had some staff turnover, and I had a, I had a heart-to-heart with him, and he said, we're at the point, as leading edges advertising always has been in terms of, you know, media and reach and data mining, and especially these days, right, it's a fantastically volatile industry and rapidly evolving. He said, I had people who were at the top of their game, who were winning at the national, international level, and who were great with clients, they were fantastic people, but they simply couldn't change fast enough. But as horrific as that was, they couldn't change fast enough, and we had to turn them over. We had to flip those people. And some of those people were very closely, right, fantastic people. And you think, well, so there it is. There's the uncomfortable decision that had to be made, in the clients and the business and the fellow employees' best interests, right? So the firm's around and viable and the top of their game, and the fallout was really kind of, I don't know if I'd say ugly, but it's, that's not pleasant for anybody, right? So as a district, do we want to be, do we want to be like pretty comfortable for everybody and pretty good for everybody, which I think, I think we are pretty comfortable for everybody and pretty good for everybody, right? We're maybe not challenging right up to the wire, sort of no matter what the fallout. And I'm not even advocating that we should necessarily, but the question is there. Should we take on some hard issues, even with some kind of uncomfortable fallout, if it serves the organization best, and especially if it serves our students best? That's kind of a long response, thank you. And that's, and that's really the conversation I want to have, is that where are we philosophically? Where are we in our hearts right now, where we're headed?
To your point, Steve, I was thinking about this issue after that night, and wondering how are we as a Board going to address moving the needle on some of the things that we continue to talk about? Things that keep coming up for us, right? Anything from test scores to behavior issues to opportunities that we might take advantage of, and sometimes we miss, to individualized learning, to all sorts of different programming. I don't know how else to do it if we can't change the way we do things. And so that's where I get really concerned, when I see that our staff and our administration, they hear innovation and they're like, please stop, right? Stop, you know, stop putting more stuff on my plate, stop asking me to try new things. We're getting mandates from the state, we're getting new testing rules all the time. And that's what I think they're hearing, and I, my sense is that that's why they're saying no. And yet, I don't know how else to change the answer, if we don't do something differently. So that's how I saw innovation. I think that's how most, the people sitting at the table see it.
I think the issue is that we are, we are responding to the best available professional practice and the best guidance that is there when it comes to hands-on-the-ground with really responding to. And two weeks from now, you'll, you will, well, we've been waiting a long time to get our full Board together to hear our education committee to deal with the whole literacy discussion. All of those pieces are based on the most latest, most up-to-date response and direction that we get on what is working with literacy, and what we do with change. The issue is that we have the pieces, but what Julian Kim are doing in working with principals across the district, along with our literacy support staff, are coming down to, and what our new data collection is, to identify right down to the classroom, to the teacher, what's happening there that will make a difference, and what's not happening in those classrooms. In order for us to meet the expectation that we're, our issues are meeting the expectation at a state and federal level, that we are working to respond to, and we're by no means satisfied with our present outcomes, but that we continue to need to respond to those with a hands-on-the-ground, direct connection, that pieces that are out there that would be somehow ultra creative, but don't connect to the needs of our students, will not work. And then as you seek a new superintendent and the profile that we collect, the reality is that if there was a system that really worked, that addressed the level of the needs of students that we have specifically in our class, we would have done it last year or the year before. There is not a perfect cure. There are means of incrementally making improvements, but there is no perfect cure. Otherwise, it would have been bought, purchased, patented, and already delivered on. So that is, that is certainly where we're going. I think if you look at where we're at today, compared to where we were at five or six years ago, the amount of innovation that has occurred in this district with technology and the use of technology as a means of delivering instruction, is a totally different world today than it was six years ago. And what we have is, teachers are probably in the, we're saying, let us get our feet on the ground with addressing the issues at hand, including the issue of literacy, in a fashion that is a realistic connection to the specific needs of our students. And that's not denying that more innovation is there, is not, is not needed and will continue to occur. But our district has their hands on the wheel, and they want to be careful that we don't drive off the road, and that we want to deliver on specifically the needs that exist. And I think there is a question of what is innovation? You know, some of the discussions were, and I, we can, when we get to that education committee meeting with the workshop, we can go into the specific details of what are the issues that we've identified that need to be fixed and corrected, and those are the issues that our teachers every day face. And then you add to it with a, in our primary classes, but across the board, with a rapid change in population, that we need to increasingly respond to the needs of children who have not had school experiences to the Oshkosh standard. And that is today creating a nightmare for our teachers, as well as our principals, in dealing with it. And that includes your superintendent assisting with lunchroom duty, and all of those kinds of things to deal with the fact that we have issues that we are handling every day that are connecting with our students. And what I also see very clearly is that we are, we are addressing the, what the strategic plan and what the community says they want, and the source of where innovation for innovation's sake is not rooted in anything that, because it wasn't just staff and administrators and teachers that were different than the Board. You saw the community was not there either, you know? They were, they were wanting us to deal with the issues at hand in instruction.
Yeah, as I mentioned at our other meeting, I found this data to be extremely fascinating and in a broad range. And I find it interesting that the next closest to us on this one item, students, which I find interesting. I don't know if our student rep has any thoughts.
Cassie's on the spot.
Tell us what students, well, she doesn't even know what this is.
Can we have, like, can we put up what they're looking at for us to...
That would be very helpful, I'm not sure.
Here are all of the characteristics. Cassie's getting up to speed, I would just say that defining innovation and reform needs more drilling down, because one person's innovation may be somebody else's common way of doing something. And I hear from primarily elementary teachers that there's a lot on their plate, plates, and if math curriculum changes at the secondary level or the middle school level, it largely affects the people who teach math. But if math changes at the elementary level, it affects every teacher. And then if there are reading changes or literacy changes that take place, again, it affects every elementary teacher. And so I can understand, especially from an elementary's perspective, that if you're being asked to do something differently or to change, I don't know that I equate change in innovation, but could be. I work part-time at the university, and there have been some changes recently in terms of how people fill out forms for travel. Is that innovation? I would say not. It's change in doing business, but, so, somebody might call that innovation. I don't, I just see it as a different process. But as far as the achievement gaps, those are things that really concern me, because we're here for all the students, regardless of their backgrounds and so on. And I know we just had a good report last week, where Julie analyzed data from the state testing results. And then we heard about an innovation we have, which is the Chromebook initiative. I'm not sure how that connected. For me, it didn't, because it didn't really answer, so how are we addressing the gaps between our free and reduced lunch kids and not? And maybe I missed something in that presentation. I actually went back and reviewed the PowerPoint, and I still didn't make the connection. But I'm not a proponent of change or reform, just for the sake of change. There is so much going on, and has been going on, in terms of teacher licensure in this state over the last eighteen months, and there's much more to come, because PI thirty-four is going to be revised, and the latest information I've received on that suggests that there are going to be some hearings around the state. They were originally scheduled for November, I believe, now they're going to be in December, and then there are a couple of legislative committees that will get these recommendations, and then they can change them, and so then there'd have to be some conferencing to come up with what the reform is going to be. So to me, that's an area of reform. I'm not sure it's innovation. I think we're seeing a lot of reform on the national level, in terms of how cabinet agencies and so on have done business. But I know a previous, a former Board member at one point, Mr. Dr. John Lambertger, whom we all respect, had talked about, what about, you know, perhaps a new high school for this community, to replace West High School? That school was built, I believe, in nineteen sixty, and looking at the science labs, and I'm sure that was built with an innovative structure at the time, but those cranberry-colored I-beams that transmit the cold into the building, starting at this time of year, or the heat in the summer, are, would not be innovative, considered innovative today. So, you know, I wonder about our science labs, for example, and I would guess that many of our science teachers and some of our students would like to see some changes and updates that might be defined as innovation. I'm not trying to put words into your mouth, well, Cassie, but I, I think there's room here to define. I think if we had an operational definition, that would help with the conversation. But I was just in a school yesterday, as part of my university position, a school built in the year two thousand, and, oh my goodness, how forward-thinking they were in terms of the welcoming atmosphere in that school. Not to take anything away from our current two, but they were built much earlier than that. And just, just the atmosphere in those buildings was just so upbeat, and the way they worked with color and texture, in terms of what you saw visually when you walked into that school, was very inviting. And innovation, reform, I don't know, but I think we, an operational definition would help.
I have a quick comment, you don't mind. So to figure out why that didn't rank high for community members, I went through the comments that people wrote, the ten pages of detailed comments, and I read every single one, including this one that says, "P.S. I hope someone actually reads this letter," which took very much thought to write. So I want to take the opportunity to say thank you to the community members that spent so much time giving us all this wonderful feedback, and some of it which goes beyond what we're looking for in a superintendent, and kind of just shared their voices on how they feel about our schools. And I do think that it did give me a lot of insight as to why maybe they didn't rank innovation very high, and a common theme throughout every comment practically, is that, you know, Stan has been doing a great job, and we're going to have a hard time filling his shoes, and there's very much kind of a fear in some of the comments, that we're going to go back to the way things were, and Stan has put us in such a great position, and we don't want things to change because we're doing so well. So I think that might be one reason, the fear of change, and somebody new, are we going to take a step back? So I did actually see a lot of comments in here, where people said that they are looking for an innovator, and somebody that is willing to lead innovation, and allow us to be more competitive. I heard that in there as well. And this was my favorite quote from the comments, because I think it really does summarize where we are. And somebody said, "We have a strong district and a community on the move. This is a very exciting time to be part of Oshkosh. I've never seen a community engagement happening at this level, nor such a deep appreciation for the school district staff and educational programs." So that said, I do think that the community is ready for us to try new things. They just don't know what it looks like, so they have a hard time... They just don't know what it looks like, so they have a hard time maybe ranking that very high.
Wonderful summary.
Thank you. Great job. Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Kelly, did you have anything?
I think it, a lot of it with the numbers being so staggered on there. I think there's just been so much change in the classrooms over the past couple of years that I think it's, there needs to be some stability for a while. And I think where I, on the board, think of innovation and reform, I think it's more, maybe not in the classrooms, I think my thought process was with mental health. We really need to work on mental health and reform that and, and be innovative on that one. I think that the innovation and the reforms need to be focused on everything, not just the classrooms. So I think a lot of staff and support staff think of their classrooms, which they should be, that's, that's, that's their focus. But as a school board on this level, our focus is, is district-wide on the whole child, you know, their health and, and I'm, all teachers and support staff think of the whole child also, absolutely. But I think having a new superintendent come in with all the changes that have been happening and all the negative changes years ago and then we're starting to move in a positive direction, I do think that, that fear, because I, as Steph did, I read all those comments and there was, it, a lot of, everything, you know, when people are great, it's out of fear, you know? That's, that's their number one concern is, you know, there's the fear of, of things not, of, of moving backwards instead of moving forward. And maybe those are conversations we need to have as a board more often of what, is what Steve had said earlier, of what, where our philosophy is, what our policies are, how we feel, what, what we think that we want our move, our, our district to become or what our innovation means. You know, if we rated it so high and the district, you know, some of the, you know, staff did not, then we're not linked. So maybe we need to work on those maybe as a board, as a self-reflection of myself. Maybe I need to work on what innovation and reform means to me and which parts of it, you know, which parts of, of all of it.
I, I don't know if like this adds in a lot, but like as a student in the classroom with the Chromebooks and new things that are constantly being changed, you see the teachers being very stressed because they are adapting to these new ways and their sole purpose that they're there is they want to teach us, they want the students to learn. But a lot of the times with the Chromebooks and stuff like that, there's constantly issues with them. They're really nice to have, but there's always gonna be issues with technology. Then you see teachers having to handle those other issues rather than teaching us. And that's like, I think, they lose that stability, stability that you were talking about and that leads to the fear. And another, like, not even just teachers, but also people in our library, instead of working with the books and the students and teaching them about research and stuff, one of our librarians has take, completely taken over the job of Chromebooks and we constantly have Chromebook damage at Oshkosh West. It's always gonna happen when you have a stu, student population of about eighteen hundred. And so their job is now to handle these Chromebooks and they can't serve like the sole purpose of like helping, they can't fulfill their jobs and carry it out. So I think that's where you lose that stability and then that raises that fear because they just want to teach us.
Yeah. Thank you, Cassie.
Thank you.
Jim and Bob, well, do you have anything else you do?
I, I just look at this, you know, if we find something, you know, I'm constantly reading where, where you integrate arts into programs improves grades across the board. I would hate to say, well, you know, we don't wanna do that because it's innovative, different.
Right.
It's proving and it's working in other districts. I think we need somebody that will say, this is good. Maybe we oughta try this.
I think when, when I think of innovation, I think what a lot of general understanding of innovation is, is this idea of incorporating technology into all the inner workings of education, learning in our communities and stuff like that. And I look at it completely different, like, for me, I think looking at innovative ways to increasing literacy or increasing those issues that are important to not only the board of, the board of education, the administration, teachers, support staff, and ultimately the students and their families. I think that's what we're, that's what we're looking for. And I think if we can build a conversation around what are the innovative paths that we can do to increase the stability of education in our community, let's, let's have a conversation around that. And I think that's, if there's uneasiness around the conversation of innovation, then that's where we focus our conversation. If, if we as a board feel that that's such a strong part of what we're looking for in the next leader, it's our responsibility to go out there and talk to the community about what, what our vision of innovation is and to build our community around that. And I think if we have the ability to do that, I think that, that, that we will have a strong amount of followers and supporters in our community. Well, that's not just about technology, it's about strengthening education in our community and thinking of innovative techniques and ways of doing that. Chromebooks are just one path.
They're a tool.
You know? They're a tool that, that get us along there. And with tools come also challenges, is what you're explaining. And, and that's part of, that's part of dealing with innovation is figuring that out.
One of the concerns I have is, we've talked about all of this all during this fifteen minutes, we've not mentioned the fact that we have a strategic plan in place that was adopted and owned by the community and continue, and that we need to continue to focus back on what's there if, if it's no longer relevant. But that, that was a broad-based citizen input system to, to get us to where we need to move from. If we, we wanna be careful, part of the success that you as a board in the last six years have had is, first of all, we've had a lot of stability on the board, but that you, you've been, and most of you were elected without opposition. Most of you were elected in, in a community that said, good things are happening, you're a good person, keep it up. Be careful that you don't allow that the, the five years prior to the two thousand twelve reoccur. Because that's when the school board was a joke in the community and that it was, people tuned in on television to see it as entertainment as opposed to getting the mission of the, of the district done and getting the work done. And be careful, don't get disconnected with that, the fact that, that you have worked, when I came to the district, the whole issue of a one-to-one initiative so that students could work independently using technology was only a dream. And there, those things didn't exist. There were a handful of schools that had iPads. There were a lot of computer labs that were fairly beaten through the process and most of our students didn't have really any access to technology at all. And the expectation was that, that being a tool, that technology for technology's sake was not, if Dave Gunlock was here, he would speak to that with the great emphasis of the fact that it was, that it's simply a tool and that the technology folks that worked with our teachers are helping teachers every day implement and use the technology. So we are, we are integrating that and it's not a standalone device because that would be a terrible way to approach it. So be, be very careful on that issue of, don't forget about, there's a plan in place that's owned by the community and don't create your own without it being connected to your community that you have. Because I think that's the critical piece is, don't, it is, it is critical that you stay connected to the community and by having all of you affirmed, elected and re-elected as an affirmation of the community, it proves that you were, you are connected to the community. They haven't asked you or they haven't someone, sent someone forward to be elected to, to say upset the apple cart. That, and so don't, don't forget your connectedness with the community and that's been the light of the last six years is the fact that you have been connected to the community, you represent well and coming from many diverse backgrounds. And that the expectation of continuing to change and continue to place expectation on both administrators and, and certainly then after teachers is, is certainly a critical component. But I think what Dr. Herzog has said about where teachers are at and expectations from where teachers are at, we are at, at the heavy-duty portion right now. They are appreciative of what have we done with the new ABC schedule and getting, getting them more prep time, getting them more common planning time and, but yet at the same time, we're dealing with greater expectations in literacy. In most schools, second to third year in a new math program and the introduction of a second year in math and then new science coming along of which some of my favorite science activities that I know by pattern to visit schools, I can get at a certain time of the year when I walk in and say, when is this happening? And the teacher says to me, Stan, it's no longer there because we have new science and you're, we're, and because I, I spend so much time visiting, I know when I can predict that I'm gonna see a certain activity going on, no, it's no longer there. What that means is those teachers have taken on a whole additional task. And when you look at literacy, math, and science, all, and, and remembering that literacy isn't just reading, it is, is writing and all those things, those things are all going on every day in our classrooms. And I think Kelly's point of we have to have, with mental health, we have to have the children to be able to sit still, be attentive and, and deal with Maslow's higher-order needs that are so desperately needed in our classrooms. You can see why teachers wouldn't be diving into saying, let's do more different, let's improve what we're doing and do it well. And that's, and, and that's not universal. We have teachers who need to grow and that's what we deal with professional development in those areas. But are we, are we satisfied with what's going on? Absolutely not. We absolutely, but we keep looking and we constantly look for, look for the cure. And this, the issue of dealing with closing achievement gap and the whole issue of literacy is, is, is as futile as keeping trying to find the cause of cancer. It keep, we keep finding new issues that, that, but there are no perfect answers to it. And, and let me assure you for the sake of whoever will be the new superintendent, they will not come with a cure. They will be what I described as the orchestra conductor trying to pull it all together and making sure that the district plays good music together, which then will result in better outcomes for students. But a cure, we would have adopted it a couple of years ago, five years ago, if we knew the cure.
As I was looking at these and reflecting on the twelve that we came up with, with the profile, I was also thinking that we as a board need to commit to these. In order for the new superintendent to be successful, we all need to be on the same page. And I was focusing on the one dealing with strongly committed to student-first philosophy in all decisions. And that got me thinking about some of our agendas and wondering, to what, to what degree do I or do we as a board talk about students
Yeah.
at our board meetings? I mean, we have a whole list of forty-some policies and while some of those have direct or indirect impact on students, they don't, they don't necessarily focus on students. And we've, we certainly have student representation at our board meetings in the form of those who lead us in the pledge and on occasion we're blessed with having those who share their musical talents with us and, and in the good news notes and in what the students share with us, we, we, we look at and celebrate student success. But to what extent do we around the table really talk about that or reflect that we believe in a student-first philosophy? So again, that's rhetorical, but I think it's important. But it also leads me into another realm and that is that as a board, I think it's important that we grow professionally. And I feel like we, we have just in these, I don't know, three months where we've had more board meetings probably than ever before in a condensed timeframe since I've been on the board. And we've, we've had some really, I thought, rich and full discussions on what we believe in and what we're looking for and what we value in terms of the school district. And I see a way of extending that with a form of professional development. I'm not saying what form that should take, but one form that, that some districts have found to be effective is to take a look at the publication from the National Association of School Boards, which is key work of school boards, where they really delve into that because there is some research that shows if you have a highly functioning board, that translates into better performance in the classroom for children and a better overall school district. So I think going forward, I think we should consider engaging in a professional development activity, whether it is that publication or it's something else, but, so that we grow as a board and reflect or mirror what we're looking for in our leaders, since we are the elected leaders and then we in turn hire the professional leader for the districts. Anyway, just some reflections. That's good.
That's great.
There is one other thing that I think merits at least a little bit, on number thirty promotes a positive professional environment for district employees, rated number one, number two, number one, number three, number eight, and then we were thirteen. It's not that we don't believe in that. I, I think, I don't wanna speak for everybody, but I felt that whoever we hire would have that
Yeah.
or else we would not be doing our job.
Right.
So that's why I think, that's why it's a little bit higher on the board's ranking because we, we just trust that we're going to do well by that.
Right.
Thank you, Jim.
Yes, exactly. May I pick up Dr. Herzog on where you just were and maybe if, if Ms. Gunn referred to the elephant, I'll go right for whatever the successor to the elephant is. But I wonder if I could pose the question, because I don't, I don't, I mean, this is a great discussion, Mr. Mack, I think you put it out, if there were a silver bullet, yeah, we'd have it. And yet, right, we all, we all know these pockets, you know, either pockets around the country where great things happen by some deliberate or accidental or serendipitous alignment of great things that come together, right? That I don't know if it's replicable. And of course, there are countries that generally unstandardize tasks out, at least with performance, right? And there are myriad reasons for that and there are, there are different variables that go into that, right? So, so in the end, I, I don't wanna speak for anybody, but personally, well, is there a way we can get toward that? Can we get toward those pockets of excellence? And so to me, innovation or reform, the word is irrelevant, results really, or, and to your point again, Dr. Herzog, the student. So I would say if giving all our students a chance to be the full, the full person and student and citizen they can become and hopefully the full poet and passionate lover of life and of humanity and this full, robust person, and it made our lives uncomfortable and our staff's life uncomfortable and our taxpayers uncomfortable, I'm in. I think that's our obligation.
The, there's a wonderful publication that I would like to provide that was produced, it's dated actually August of two thousand sixteen, not just this fall, and that received from Luther Olson and, and the, it's a report on innovation, international studies of innovation with chief, chief under the auspices of the chief state school officers from across the country. And, and it outlines a whole number of variables that include, if we're going to make state-by-state schools the very best outcome and have comparable outcomes to, you know, Finland and European countries and, and Canada and, and the bottom line is, it lists those and I will supply that to the board, but the ability and in the state of Wisconsin and under the system we have here today, it can't be met. We haven't funded and we haven't developed to, to make that criteria. It, it talks about both teacher compensation. Let me put it this way, every, every week, we lose somebody being nabbed by another district with a ten thousand dollar bonus. We can't continue to have teachers poached away from us or other educators poached away from us of high quality, but we can't hold on to them because we, our financial condition does not permit us to do that. And a governor's veto didn't help. And each of those are, but I will supply that to the board because just those things are absolutely, totally agree. What are the things that we could do to become at the cutting edge? And, and I, and we'll, we'll duplicate that for you and provide that to you. And we'll duplicate that for you and provide that to you because it's just a, it outlines all of the initiatives that are being suggested nationally by chief state school officers, that being the superintendents or commissioners of public instruction across the state or across the United States. And I know that Senator Luther Olson was a party to it because he's pictured among a group of individuals within the study that, yes, those are things that are there, but the resources that we have wouldn't permit us to do it at the present time. We'd love to be able to come to you and say, "Well, we've chosen that we have 22 teaching positions that we've lost $220,000 we wish we had that we could have matched and countered and kept." And that would just, it wouldn't get us to the level of compensation that's being recommended in that report.
The report is called "No Time to Lose." I've read that cover to cover and have reflected on some of the same things you've mentioned because it's really intended for state legislatures. But be that as it may, we're all in charge of something. We're in charge of this school district. So what could we do? What ideas in that publication might spur us to say, "We could try this in this district and this might work." Or what could we change or innovate or reform to achieve better results without, you know, causing total chaos? But we're in charge of this district and there may be some ideas in there that we can utilize, whether it's Finland or I think Canada is also mentioned in there and Singapore, I think is the other major one. And there's going to be a follow-up report to that, which gets into more how-to. I think it, I'm not sure if it's going to be at the state legislature level or the school board level, but I think it's good to think about those things. We're a good district, we are, and we could be better. I believe in continuous improvement and that means that what we did two years ago or five years ago and was good can still be improved on and we can still get different and better results because our students are not the same. They're not like in a factory where you're depending on the quality of widgets or the steel or whatever, where you can send it back if it doesn't meet your specifications. So we know our students are different. So what can we do or what should we do differently to achieve the results that we're looking for? And I think that's a healthy discussion to have.
Is there any further discussion from the board? I feel like we've gotten what we needed. Is there more? Anything feel unresolved?
I have a question for the board. You don't have to answer around or collectively or at all. I would pose the question though, do you think it's possible that our school district become a, words are inadequate, but a singular beacon of excellence? That we could defy the odds, defy the governor, defy the budget, defy any number of conditions? Say, people in Annhurst, Massachusetts and in Sausalito are going to Novi Oshkosh because our schools broke out of what should have been. Do you believe we could do that? And that's the question I'll leave.
I'd like to answer it. Please. I think, I think it needs to go hand in hand because I hear what Superintendent Mack is also saying, that we have to, I believe we should and have to listen to what our community says, obviously, that's why I'm here, and listening to and going in guideline with the strategic plan. But I also believe that it's, I want to take on the responsibility and I want to, with Steve, I agree that we can be, if we are looking for innovative, if we're looking for that, if we want to be the outstanding community, if we want to be that school district, then there's a few people in the district that could start that and just show things. And I want to, and I agree with Steve, being one of those people. If that, if as a school board, we rank this as two, then we can come up with ideas, we can do things, along with what Barb was saying, as far as, as a school board, working on ourselves and doing, you know, workshops with us, you know, whoever becomes on this board, working together to start that. If that's what we believe in, which we obviously do, if we ranked it at a two, then we need to have those conversations, like I was saying before, about what that is for us moving forward, but getting the feedback before we, obviously, we would never make those decisions or put anything in without, you know, the teams of our staff from top to bottom. But we, I think we can make those and whatever that may look like. So bringing those more forward and having more discussions about that, and maybe that's something in the future that we need to work on, as I liked this even, I'm going to throw it really out there, to use something like this for our self-evaluations for the school board. This is, I learned, as Jim said, this was fascinating. I love numbers and I sat and looked this over and did averages forever. It was really, I love feedback from the community. It's my favorite thing because that's what I'm here for, is to represent them. So to get this, I think that this is great that we could use, I really liked this idea. And I think that it makes us a stronger school board and to bring those, to make us a stronger district.
To that end, just the other elephant in the room, 500 responses? It's not good enough, guys. We, we're not doing our job. If a school district with 10,000 kids and at least 20,000 biological parents.
So wasn't it 800 responses?
Maybe. I couldn't tell if it was 500 or if it was 300 here and 500 there and some of them are mixed.
So were they mixed? Because there was 300 on one and 500 on the other. But did parents take both or was it, right, I agree.
It's not even, we're not even in the same universe that I want us to be in. So I took that, yes, the numbers were interesting, but the number of responses to me was striking.
I was surprised when we asked Mary, because I was with you. I thought that that was a low number and Mary said, "You should be proud of it. That's a big, high number."
I don't agree.
Remember, it's not a stratified random sample. You're dealing with a segment of the population that is engaged.
And everybody had the opportunity to take that survey and that is not high enough in my book. I don't think we're doing a good enough job.
I agree with you.
The other point that Mary had brought up from Ray and Associates, our consultant, was the large number of neutral responses, which always fascinates me on a five-point scale. Does that mean that they wanted to be polite and didn't want to say disagreement, so they chose that middle ground? Or does it mean they don't have enough information or they?
Default setting.
We don't communicate well enough to them, what we're doing and how we're doing it in certain areas. And it can be a combination of things, I recognize that. But I was struck by her comment saying that there was a large number of middle-of-the-road responses. And if you group those with the negatives, that's really troubling. Now, if you group them with the positives, that can look pretty good. But I agree with Allison and Kelly. I expected a stronger, a larger number in all the categories, even administration and teachers. We have about, what, 800 teachers and about 110 were represented. That struck me as low. Does, again, does that mean that we didn't do a good enough job of getting information to people so that they could respond? Or parents? You know, we heard a gentleman earlier this evening talk about the challenges of communication via technology. And we've heard reports with, from our staff about the relatively small percentage, but it's still an important percentage of people who don't have access to internet in the home. So if they didn't and thus didn't respond, we've lost out on hearing from those people. And then that got me thinking about, all right, what if we have people who are vision impaired? Can they access computers and respond if that was the way the survey was versus some other opportunities for them to respond? So I guess I just think about a lot of things and how we can improve. So I'll leave it at that.
Any other thoughts, questions to leave us pondering?
I'd just like to thank Steve for constantly opening our minds and making us think about world issues, global level and everything. I appreciate it, Steve.
Well, the fun's over. Now we have to go into the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material and each item was discussed at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. I've been asked to pull 6B. Anybody else? Arky dokey. Here we go. The board will consider approval of 1, minutes of October 25, 2017, regular board meeting; 2, minutes of October 25, 2017, executive session, regular board meeting; 3, minutes of November 1, 2017, regular board meeting; 4, minutes of November 8, 2017, special board meeting; 5, bills payable; 6, personnel; A, appointments, resignations, and salary schedule; 7, 2018-2019 high school course modification; A, to purchase property located at 1225 Kentucky Street, Oshkosh, Wisconsin; 9, 2016-17 site department carryover funds; 10, 2018 to '20 Pollock Community Water Park Agreement; 11, policy updates. Holy cow. I have to read all these, yeah? Okay, here you go. Sorry, I guess I should ask before I started. A, 4230 conflict of interest clerical change; B, 2531 copyrighted works; C, 0100 definitions; D, 0131.1 bylaws and policies; E, 144.1 compensation; F, 164.1 regular meetings; G, 164.2 special meetings clerical; H, 166 agenda; I, 2260 nondiscrimination and access to equal educational opportunity; J, 2260 1.01 parent legal guardian and family engagement in Title I programs; K, 2370 educational options numbering change to PO 8146, delete PO 2370; L, 8146 notification of educational options renumbered from PO 2370 above; M, 2411 school counseling and academic career planning; N, 2430 district-sponsored clubs and activities; O, 2431 interscholastic athletics; P, 3120.01 job descriptions; Q, 3122.01 drug-free workplace; R, 4122.01 drug-free workplace; S, 3432 employee sick leave clerical; T, 4432 employee sick leave clerical; U, 5111 eligibility of resident, non-resident students; V, 5130 withdrawal, dropout from school; W, 5421 grading; X, 5517 student anti-harassment; Y, 5540 law enforcement investigative interviews of students; Z, 5610 suspension and expulsion; A, 5830 student fundraising; B, 6605 crowdfunding new; C, 6800 system of accounting; D, 7530.02 staff use of personal communication devices; E, 8310 public records; F, 8320 personnel records; G, 8320.1 unauthorized acquisition of staff personal information; H, 8330 student records; I, 8350 confidentiality; J, 8605 use of electronic wireless communication devices by district employees who operate district-owned or operate vehicles; KK, 8800 religious and patriotic ceremonies and observances; LL, 9700 relations with non-school affiliated groups; and MM, 7540.07 intellectual property numbering change to 7540.08.
So moved. Second.
Could you guys do less policy and government?
It'd be smaller next time.
Yes. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Aye.
Evans, aye, Garner.
Aye.
Garner, aye, Herzog.
Aye.
Herzog, aye, Olmsted.
Aye.
Olmsted, aye, Heschel.
Aye.
Heschel, aye.
Aye.
Carolyn, aye.
Aye.
Alison, aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Resolution 6B, be it resolved that the Oshkosh area school district board of education approve the retirements filed with secretary to the board of education.
So move. Second.
Discussion.
Mrs. Garner, I had asked that this be pulled so once again, we could recognize a number of our employees entering a new age and stage of life. We have Peggy Spanbauer, who is retiring as assistant cook at Oshkosh North after 31 years, almost, yeah, 31 years of employment in the district. One of the things that strikes me about this list is the longevity and the dedication of these people to the children and families of our district. I'd been hearing throughout this calendar year that there were going to be some retirements at Oakwood School directly from most everybody on this list. And I, and they said they were retiring and I reminded them that had to be approved by the board.
So should we just have some?
I don't see them in the audience, but Sharon Barlow, grade one teacher, Oakwood Elementary, 27 years service; Terry Hagman, grade two teacher, Oakwood Elementary, 32 years service; Erin Heineman, grade five teacher, 27 years service, also Oakwood; Marcy Mallon, kindergarten teacher, Oakwood Elementary. She's been in the district for 22 years, although some of those years were spent at Lakeside. Kathleen Miller, kindergarten teacher at Oakwood, 27 years currently; Ruth Redslough, grade two teacher, Oakwood Elementary, 30 years currently; and Erin Sagan, grade three teacher, also at Oakwood, 30 years service. If you add together all the years, if I did this reasonably correctly, we're over 225 years represented by these eight individuals. And I just want to wish them well on behalf of the district. It's really bittersweet because they've been in the district a long time. They've done a great job of serving the children and the families and the community and they will be missed. But it's time to move on. So thank you to all those people who have dedicated their lives to the children of our community.
Thanks, Barb. Okay. Is there any other discussion? Please call the roll.
Garner?
Aye.
Garner, aye, Herzog?
No. I mean, yes.
Herzog, aye, Olmsted.
Let him go.
Olmsted, aye, Heschel.
Aye.
Heschel, aye, Carolyn.
Aye.
Carolyn, aye, Alison.
Aye.
Alison, aye, Evans.
Aye.
Okay. Individually considered resolutions, none. Requests for future agenda items? Yes, sir.
I have one. And it's a close companion to our discussion tonight. Along the way in the course of our superintendent's search for retaining a firm, I ran across, well, I was introduced to the Learning Partnership in Canada, referenced it in our conversation with Dr. Fosmaner. Last week, I spoke with the executive director of the organization. And just in brief, the Learning Partnership is a consortium of education professionals and education interests, public schools in Canada, and the business community, banking and manufacturing and professional consulting services. And in a conversation, it sounds like a fantastic coalition, some great work being done. And the number, the reach and the numbers, and it seems like a really vibrant partnership, seeking the best ideas from education, the best ideas from business, the executive director is from the world of education, had been superintendent in Quebec and then on to national level offices, and he's been executive director for about a year now. But he had offered to have, to do a Skype presentation to our board on what they're doing in Canada with this consortium. So I'd like to bring forward to our board and our staff that I'd like to have that conversation, if it's the will of the board.
Purpose. So if we put it in our board, in the packet, love the idea, what do we want to get out of that conversation?
You know, right offhand, we've, especially under Mr. Mack's leadership, we've made such inroads with the community generally and the business community specifically, pro-business interests. I'm curious to see how that plays out on a national level with high level of subscription among public school districts.
So how we can maybe broaden our reach?
Yes, and even, I don't want to speculate too much here. Yes, and if that's a more fully developed, I don't know of any comparable US program though there might be, and I just don't know about it.
There is one in Minnesota, the Minnesota Business Education Partnership.
Okay. So state-by-state, state programs, Lieutenant V?
Because it's really driven by a connection with the state, with the state chamber of Congress.
Okay. So I'd be curious if it seems that there are more fully developed comparable programs in the US, maybe it makes sense to have some of our staff or as a district that we're a partner, maybe the sole US public school district that's a partner with the Learning Partnership Canada, so we can be privy to, as I read the rankings, the number two or the number five school.
Would the, would the goal be to find out how we could become a part of that partnership?
I would be open to that, right? That's a perhaps, right? If it seems to make sense, if it seems to benefit to our district or there's some merit to it, I think, yeah.
Okay. Everybody okay with that? Anybody okay with that? Everybody's okay with that? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other future agenda items? I have one. I think we need to pick up Mr. Mickelson's policy on what happens when kids are getting apps, on is there a way for us to email grades? I would love that.
Yeah, I think that that is a fantastic idea.
And I'd also, I think if we can pick up on his three themes, which, and then the last of the third was the grading of homework. How does that, I mean, everybody, I don't want to micromanage.
I think we need to pick up Mr. Mickelson's policy on what happens when kids are getting apps, on is there a way for us to email grades? I would love that.
Yeah, I think that that is a fantastic idea.
And I'd also, I, I think, if we can pick up on his three, three themes, which, and then the last of the third was the grading of homework. How does that? I mean, everybody, I don't want to micromanage teachers, but let's at least have something, can we at least have that on future agenda items?
But I think there's a greater issue there that, that it keeps on coming back to, is that there's a breakdown of staff.
That's the policy.
Personally, yeah.
Yeah. Do we have to have a policy? Maybe we do. Let's at least have a discussion.
Policy guideline, have a discussion about what we should do.
I think respond in general, but be careful not to micromanage.
Oh, absolutely.
Nobody wants to micromanage.
There's grades on Canvas, though. Like, I get notifications of every homework and every grade.
There is a, there's.
You have to opt into it. You select.
He's looking for an active engagement that, because remember, again, we're dealing with one out of 10,000 students, and it is working for the vast majority.
Well, we don't know, just because nobody else is showing up here doesn't mean that it's working for everybody else. And I think that his points are valid, and I, as a parent, don't, when the, when Canvas and, it is not easy, and it is not a slam dunk, and it would be nice if there was a system to email me, I would love that, too. So, there's, now there's two out of 10,000, I guess. And, and I also would like to know if my kids get an F. I think that that's.
I feel like that phone call is a more legitimate way to contact a parent.
Let's, let's talk about it.
Let's talk about it.